We're now taking it down?
Well, I can.
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah.
People are gonna be...
We're just evening it out.
Yeah.
Hand us some napkins.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Not too much.
Not too much.
Oh, man. Can't please everybody, I guess. Thus the park- thus the parking discussion.
Parking.
How's that for a morph?
Oh, you're right.
That's a top of one, yeah.
We're here tonight to, again, carry on in our parking management plan discussion. And just to see where everybody is, we've all understood what StanTech has presented us, what the plan would be if we received all the appropriate approvals. Just to reiterate, that would be to, of course, have a parking pass available to be purchased online or through an app, Ryan is doing now. And with that, that would allow the person with the appropriate pass to park on the island. Originally, we were talking anywhere on the island, selling the passes on an annual basis, weekly basis. I say annual, but in the season. Everybody keeps correcting me. Seasonal pass, a weekly pass, or a daily pass. We have heard from the citizens at our workshop, and it's clear that if the citizens don't have a free pass, that's using that term, then, you know, they don't want us to do anything. And we have sampled some folks, and we'll get some support in Columbia if we want to go in that direction. And I think, I think we do want to go in that direction. We'll talk about it. I'll give everybody a chance to speak their mind here in a moment. But the citizens were rather clear. I don't have a solution for the guests of a citizen, or guests of a rental property, or whatever that would like to park on the right-of-way. That would be by permit. And we could isolate and then create, if council agrees, to just geographic areas, like they have done in the city of Charleston and Columbia. But then that brings in other issues as well. We don't want to inhibit anybody on the island from parking anywhere else on the island. And that's, that was clear in our communications. The only other thing I'll share with you that we got some support on, but it's just support, it's not action and not a conclusion, is that we brought up the issue of golf carts, which are very popular on the island. I'm not, I'm speaking more to the public than I am to you guys, you all know. But they would, we got some support, if necessary, even some action through legislature to get us to have some golf cart parking-only areas, particularly at the end of avenues in the, I'll say 42nd on up to 57th, and maybe some areas along Palm and elsewhere, if that can be worked through. So, at least we have a, some support in that direction, and I think, at least I would support it, and I suspect will, others will also, so. With that said, I'll just, let's go around the table and hear what you think you heard and where you think we're going and so on. Marty?
I'll, I'll start. A lot of good comments, a lot of good ideas. One of the, one of the first things I picked up, one of the, one of the first comments was that we should allow parking on Palm Boulevard, on one side. I can see no reason why we should carve out a special exemption for one piece of the island when, when we're gonna burden the rest of the island from 21st to 41st with parking. That said, I think citizens need to have parking passes. I'd probably recommend a couple per family. And again, the problem we have with visitors when they're renting, short-term rentals, renting and have more than a couple of vehicles, there's gonna, needs to be a way for them to get parking passes also. And the golf carts, I think we're all in agreement that we need golf cart parking. And as evidence of that, I'll state right now that we do not have enough golf cart parking at the recreation center. Because there had to be at least 100 golf carts there.
Halloween.
For Halloween. That's what I've got there.
Okay?
Clarification, when you say parking on Palm Boulevard...
I think you meant Ocean.
Did you mean Ocean?
Did you mean...
I meant, I thought I said Ocean.
You said Palm.
I'm sorry. I think we should allow parking on Ocean Boulevard. On one side, yes.
All right, Jimmy?
Before you started, I had written down some notes to myself to make sure I talk about, you know, as Marty and you said, I think the citizens, the residents, the property owners, the long-term renters with leases should be exempt, you know, proven with a long-term lease showing up to City Hall. How we do that, whether it's a hurricane reentry decal, whatever, I think should be, again, exempt. Golf cart friendly, of course. But I also, I disagree with Ocean Boulevard. I think it's kinda nice to have one street left on this island that is kinda pristine-looking. So, I mean, that's my, my one point there. And I think the north end of the, on the, the side streets, I look at those streets, and I look, think about if we had to get a fire truck or an EMS truck down those streets, and there's parking on both sides, I think we're asking for a disaster to happen. I think we had that happen before, we had a fire down in Wild Dunes on those dead-end streets. And we could only get one truck down, and we couldn't, you know, it was very tight.
Barb?
Where to begin? We have to keep track of what we're trying to do. Our plan is to start now, but the real fruits of this plan are gonna be three, five, seven years from now. If we don't cap it now, we're gonna be inundated, tens of thousands of extra people moving into the Cooper. About Ocean Boulevard, I live on Ocean Boulevard. If you look from 6th to 1st, there are no sidewalks. So, parking on Ocean Boulevard is a danger, because then people have to walk in the street now. So, you add people getting out of cars on, on the street. So, I think this is a work in progress. It's gonna take years. I think we need to start with a plan, and then find out our errors, find out where we can tweak it and make it better. But inaction is, just doesn't seem to be like a possibility to me. Where do you begin? What's the magic number? In May, in May, we had 1,050 cars on a real busy weekend day, but that wasn't the highest day. That was just the day that StanTech did it.
Mm-hmm.
So, we have to figure out a magic number of how many, how many stickers or permits you sell. Golf carts, of course, we want to encourage golf carts. Citizens have to have a sticker to park free, or this plan doesn't go anywhere. Citizens' guests, that gets a little problematic. And we're talking about, let's say, nine to five from May, end of May to September. So, it is a, it is a challenge, but it really, if you're having a party at night, it doesn't affect it. If you're a beach walker in the morning, or a jogger, or a turtle person, or a surfer, you're not affected. So, what we're doing is trying to keep the crowd down, which is gonna get worse and worse and worse. Nothing else.
Okay. Jimmy, any?
The only thing I would say is, I don't, I don't think that citizens deserve to be impacted negatively in any way whatsoever. If I want to have my sister come down from Columbia at 2:00 in June in the afternoon, and there's no parking in the driveway, she should be able to park on my right-of-way without me having to pay for anything, or them to pay for anything. We should be, we should emit, hand out paper rearview mirror hangers for island residents' guests. And so, they are not impacted in any way negatively by this plan. Everything else, it's about the Ocean Boulevard parking. I agree wholeheartedly with the three previous speakers. But I don't, I'm, I'm not for, if we can do it for the residents, you gotta take care of the medical personnel, people come to see them, their grandchildren, and guests, and family.
Okay. Ryan?
I mean, there's so many issues, there's so many things out there that's gonna come about. I mean, it's gonna be interesting to see, you know, which way this, which route this thing goes. If you go through and start limiting, or limiting, I don't know how you can limit the number of people that are coming out here, and I've said that from the very beginning. If you're gonna cap it at 1,000, or even 2,000, well, when number 2,001 comes across the bridge, what's that gonna do? I mean, where are they gonna go? I mean, they're gonna find a place, they're gonna park somewhere, and they're, you know what? They'll, they'll probably get a ticket. But then there's 2,002, then there's 2,003, then there's 2,004. But there's still people gonna come out here. I look at it as a safety issue, and then one of the things I brought up before is the big, is the four-foot rule. And one of the problems is, is if we have a car that parks within that four-foot jurisdiction, the four-foot rule jurisdiction, and all we do is ticket it, it's a safety hazard. So, now all we do is have a, have a safety hazard with a ticket that's gonna sit there all day, and it's still a safety hazard. The problem is not, that's not solving the problem at all. We have to be able to be a little bit more aggressive with that, whether it's towing, or whether it's, you know, I don't know what it's gonna be, but, you know, there's a lot of things that are going out there. A lot of them aren't gonna work. And, you know, it's, it'd be curious to see which way this thing's gonna go. It's, it's great that we're having this discussion here. We're gonna look at J.C. Long Boulevard. How is this gonna impact our commercial business, our commercial district? Is, you know, J.C. Long Boulevard, all those commercial districts, people park in the right-of-way though, whether it's J.C. Long, or whether it's Pavilion. It's all right-of-way parking. Are we gonna eliminate that parking now? Are all those patrons that, that visit those restaurants, or visit those establishments, are they gonna get ticketed for not having a parking pass for going to those restaurants? What about the parking that we have in front of our public safety building? Those are in violation. Or the public, or the parking that we have along 26th Avenue, or 27th Avenue, I mean, not 26th, but 27th, 28th, and 29th Avenue? Those are a lot of questions that we, that still need to be answered, not, not just through us, but through the state. You know, our hands are tied by the state. And they're gonna throw us a bone with some golf cart parking issues? I mean, we've...
Well, let's not get distracted with that, but that's just...
Well, then, that's kinda what it is, though. I mean, well, you know, they're gonna offer something. I mean, we have, we have golf cart parking at 21st Avenue, we have golf cart parking at 23rd Avenue, and we have golf cart parking at 25th Avenue. You know, we, I've tried to expand it, you know? Our hands are tied with golf, with golf carts, and the state doesn't wanna do a whole heck of a lot, and I'm not sure that they will.
Michael?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. You know, kind of, you know, I think we've really been talking this thing through, and, you know, and I really think by, you know, moving forward with a definite plan, that we can get this thing done, and it will, it will be with some rough patches, absolutely, but I think it's something that we really have gone through, a lot of these issues. But I'm in favor of creating a parking overlay district. The overlay district would be Palm Boulevard. I'd like to see Ocean, if the support would be there for it, but I'm not sure if we had the votes for that. But I think it should be a parking overlay district from Palm Boulevard to 41st Avenue. Okay. With that, that's the only place people can park outside of the city parking lots for the beach parking. Now, I think we would need to set up parking, and, you know, in certain cases, example of what Ryan's saying about J.C. Long Boulevard, we can set that up and have that under, just put that under meters, in some way to manage it that way. So, that can be managed easily. I think parking at the rec should be universal, it should be open to all parking. You know, that way we cover the bases for the sports teams, and if someone chooses to park at the rec and shove their stuff for three blocks down to the beach, then so be it. Okay? As far as guests, and, you know, number one, I think we should be able to register guests. I'd like to see some kind of an online system where we could go in and measure, and register the guests. So, if you're having a picnic for your grandmother, and you have 20 cars, you'd be able to print out those passes for those cars, and able to have that on the avenue. The key is, I really think we should take all parking away from the neighborhoods. I don't think we should be allowed to park on Carolina, on Charleston, on the avenues. We should shut that down, and that's been a big issue here. And by limiting parking on Palm, or parking overlay district, I think it makes it more enforceable for the police on that. So, if the police are going down 30th Avenue, or number 1030th, or whatever, for an example, they see a car parked there, and it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't have a sticker on it, I mean, the license plate is not registered for a parking pass, and they're illegal, and they get ticketed. And I also think we should increase the parking to $50 for a ticket. Okay? Now, as far as registration, I think every car registered on Isle of Palms should get a, should be, should get a parking, should be registered in the system with their license plate. And that way, if they do go, choose to go to the beach, or get a cheap spot on the island, they have that, so. Rather than limit it to, you know, two cars per house, I think, you know, I know a lot of folks with grown-up kids that live there, and they wish the kids would leave, but they don't. And I, you know, I feel we should be able to allow that parking. Or if someone is a long-term rental, you know, they would just go and register at the police department for the same, same privileges to park on the island as anyone else, so.
Okay.
That's my read.
Sandy?
Well, listening to everybody's pros and cons, I think we've heard all of them, and I think they're all valid. As Ryan said, this, you know, it's not as simple as it looks. And every time I, you know, rack my brain and come up with something, and I'll send it to Lyndon, and Lyndon will say, "Yeah, but..." You know, there's so many "yeah buts" with, with what we've got. I think what Michael has, has just reiterated is probably the simplest by establishing parking zones and no parking zones. And I think we've heard from our residents that they really do not want parking in their residential areas. And from what I understand with the pass, the pass will open up parking to the entire island. Anywhere that there is opportunity to be four feet off the road, they can park there.
That's the original concept.
That's the original concept. And I think that's just got so many flaws. And in, in looking also, as, as we think about our parking on 41st and Waterway, in assimilation with the Marina, that also will be taken care of itself if we do the four feet off, because there's not four feet for them to be, be off the road. I think, in conclusion, everything that has been said is valid. I think we have our, our ideas, but we've got StanTech that is supposed to be the consultant and the authority. I'm looking for them to take all of what we say and come back with, with a plan.
They basically did.
Well, but they came with something that wouldn't work.
Yeah, citizens sure didn't like it, what they came up with.
That's, that's why we're here.
Right.
But, you know, I think all of this discussion then needs to be put in their lap, and they should say, "Okay, based on everything that you've said, here is what you can do." And, and with, you know, Sterling's help, here is legally what you can do. Because I don't think nine members of this body's gonna come up with a parking plan. I think we can give our ideas, but we're not experts.
Well, we've gotten the experts' opinions, and we're not, they're not gonna change their opinion.
I don't think it's that far wrong, we just need...
No, no, I understand, we'll come back to it. Let's, let's hear from Patrick.
Yeah, I, I agree with a lot that has been said. I, I agree with Ryan in terms of whatever we come up with, and Rick has made that very clear, we're gonna end up having to, we're gonna have to wait and see, we're gonna have to adjust, we're gonna, and Barb's suggestion on that magic number. That's probably the most important variable that we're gonna have to deal with and be the most flexible with, until we put this plan in action and give it a chance. I also agree with all of the comments that have been said about our residents. We've heard from them in terms of, you know, there's got to be a way developed for them and their guests to be able to park at their home in a reasonable fashion, even if it doesn't even need a paper sticker. I mean, if in fact, as a resident, we could call in their license plate number, then that would absolve who's ever handling, the managing of the parking, whether it's our own police department, or we have another agency that's managing the parking, I think that's solvable. It's, it's gonna take us some time. Another issue that I've heard replete since I, since I've been on the planning commission is fairness. You know, if you're gonna ask one resident to put up with something, it should apply to everyone. And that, and I'm speaking now of the right-of-ways. I see no reason, I mean, you talk about a safety issue on, on Ocean, crossing Palm, with the amount of traffic, if you're on the land side, not the ocean side, that's much more dangerous to me than having to walk down, you know, I wish we had a sidewalk. And maybe eventually, that's something the city can do. But I have heard over and over again, why is Ocean exempt? And I think it should be open on the ocean side for parking. But again, I, I think whatever we do, we ought to go into with the idea that we are gonna have to be flexible, again, listening to residents, but also our safety personnel, what is working, what's not working. And I certainly like what Michael had to say.
Mr. Mayor, one other thing. I often find myself talking about our parking management plan, but I think we, we need to ingrain in ourselves that this is beach access parking. That's what we're trying to attain, is beach access, not just parking on the island, but to enable people to get to the public beach. So, anything that simplifies their ability to get, get to the beach, rather, you know, not having to cross a boulevard, not going on side streets and having to cross that boulevard, I think that's one of the, the main cruxes of the, the plan should be, the accessibility to the beach access. You're...
Yeah, so just, I mean, obviously, it's a complex problem. I mean, you know, I, I used at one time, as a talking tool, a Rubik's Cube, you know, and I always felt, in trying to solve Rubik's Cube, every time I twisted, I didn't know where I was getting further ahead or further behind. And some of what we're talking about here is, is that we thought we were getting further ahead when we had the StanTech plan, and we could issue permits through an internet and web to everybody on the island, et cetera. But now, hearing from the citizens, I hear Jimmy wants to hang a tag, which means somebody's gotta print a tag and get the tag to them, but then how many, how often, et cetera, or do it through an internet printer, whoops, not all our citizens have printers and capability of getting that. And other people say, "Well, they can call in." Well, who do they call? We don't have anybody sitting around waiting to receive a...
Five little calls.
And, and we're talking principally, the pinch point is typically weekends, holidays and weekends. And we don't have staff sitting around waiting to, to call and hear from Mary and say, you know, "Print me five passes, because I've got a birthday party coming in this afternoon." So, it's a very complex problem that's not solved by a simple application, which, you know, looked very good when we were started down this road a couple of months ago. And I still think, whatever we do from a permit standpoint, should be web-based and accessible through an app or through your home computer, so that if you are gonna wanna have a permit, that it can be printed. Now, for citizens, I don't know what to do. I'm kinda confused as far as how to get a citizen, and we talk about getting them all registered...
You don't, you don't need one application. You can have several that would get to the same goal. Example, you could have a, it could be done on an app, where someone could register a guest's license plate, which would go in there, okay? And we, and we would just, and then, so if someone would go in, okay, that's one. We're talking about multiple stool, legs of a stool, not just one. You can have a way where someone could go to City Hall, or the police department, or however it was set up, and basically give them a list of license plates where they could be entered in. Okay? We have people in the police department that are manning the window right now, that could be, and they'd have to plan ahead and register these license plates ahead of time during the week, okay? Or they could go online and do it. So, I mean, there's, I think there's several ways it can be done, and we could, should set up a mechanism to, for each one of their, which, because we have some, our residents are very tech-savvy, and some of our residents are, you know, just kind of content, you know, being where they're at with their tech, tech skills, so. And that's why we would need that. But I do think in a period of time, more and more people are gonna gravitate to the internet, to sign in as their guest, or use an app application.
All of this can be solved. My problem is, how do we solve it by this coming season?
The devil's in the details.
And we're now just starting to get into some of the details, and we haven't even really talked about much of the material.
Parking on J.C. Long, parking at the rec center, parking at the churches on Sunday, you know, there could be signs put up, "No beach parking." Right? So, you know, that would do it. I like Jimmy's idea about the, if you, if I have two right-of-way parking spaces, I get two hang tags. My responsibility for giving them and collecting them back, right? The city gives them the first two free, if they start losing them, and that sticker would have, have to have the address on it. So, well, why not? You get a sticker...
No, no, I understand what you're saying, but do the hang tags go to whom? The resident?
No, I have it.
Property owner.
And when property owner has it...
Well, before you go on, there's, obviously, there's a resident, and then there are property owners. They're not necessarily the same person. We have a lot of properties here that are owned by non-residents, and their license, their registration...
Well, they're second, second homes.
You are, you, yeah, second homeowners principally.
Well, okay.
I don't know how to deal with that.
Property owners, yeah.
May I follow up on that? Again, citizens, residents, property owners, and long-term tenants should all have that free pass. And again, what Ryan was saying about J.C. Long Boulevard, I think our commercial district is different from our residential districts anyway, and, and as he said, you know, the police department, fire department trucks are out there in the middle of them, I mean, we can't be giving tickets to our...
And not, nothing, not, let's just get it clear, nothing what we're talking about should affect the commercial district.
Right.
Right. It should not affect G C one, G C two, or G C three.
Right.
Three, right. I mean, that, that should be clear. We're, we're just talking about...
I mean, that must be a challenge now. Do people park in front of the Acme and go to the beach?
Yes, of course.
And what do they do about it? Nothing.
Well, can they do?
They can't.
What can they do?
But if there was a sign that said, "No beach parking."
Yeah, but you gotta catch them and...
They do have signs up, and it's cut down on the sun.
Yeah.
But, and also, first and foremost, I do think we need to point out that, I think Isle of Palms has done a great job in providing beach accesses to non-residents. We've just gotten to the point with the growth of Charleston County or the tri-county areas, that Isle of Palms cannot keep on absorbing the numbers that are keeping, so we've got to, as we said earlier, we gotta draw the line, and, and it's gonna hurt the first couple of years as we massage it, but now's the time to do it. And there's gonna be some bumps in the road.
If we're talking about hang stickers too, stickers for medical persons, I mean, we had a lady who wanted a net, perfectly valid, and she should be able to plan that and have it. I mean, that, that's reasonable. Parallel parking only on Palm, we talked about, which is another interesting thought. I think the four-foot rule all over the island is just not gonna work, is it? Because then, if I live on Carolina, I can't park, no one can park on my right-of-way. You've just taken away my right-of-way completely, for example.
The residents or anyone.
Right, nobody can.
So, I don't know if that's a...
Well, let me deal with the four-foot. We are, we have started, although we haven't put it in writing yet, we've started a dialogue to get the four-foot on Palm, it has to be through the legislature, as it was on the water side. So, if we can do it on the land side, frankly, I'm not, we could actually go for more than four feet, and we could ask for six foot, I mean, whatever. But it's gonna have to be through legislature. Our two legislators are willing to, to carry that forward, and, you know, I don't know how they, I don't know who would ever resist it, so, I mean, if we wanted, you know, I don't know, come forward. But it just has to get put into the meat grinder, and I don't know when it's gonna kick out. You can assume it's not gonna kick out for this current, coming season.
How about parallel parking? Does that have to go through anything, or can we just...
We can do that, but I, I have trouble with parallel parking. You've, with the trees there, and we're moving people in, you wind up with one car per, per a pair of trees.
That's when Ocean Boulevard, I mean, the ocean side of Palm Boulevard also, the trees are on both sides of the roads.
And it works.
And it works.
Not if we put, well, okay, we'd have to, we'd have to look at the geometry of it.
Mayor?
Please.
Do we know, I, I've heard the number, we need 198 additional spaces, plus our lots. Did I hear that from...
For the beach management plan.
From the, from the plan.
That is messed up, and I see DOT will go for it.
Right. But that, that was the original, right? That we, StanTech views the number, in addition to what you have, you need 198 additional spaces. Have we looked at how many?
I don't remember, A, I don't remember that, but B, the most important thing is where the space, where they are relative to the beach access, it's not...
I don't think they meant additional, over and above what we're providing.
I don't think they meant additional over and above what we're providing. I was, I think they were speaking to it in terms of if you, if you wanted to reduce what you've got now, because we far exceed what is required in the state's requirements concerning public beach access, you would still need, then it may have been 198, I didn't commit that to memory, but, you know, you would still need to at least provide under 98, if you wanted to eliminate some. That may have been the context in which they said it.
Okay, here it says, 33 existing access points not covered by the county park equals 198 parking spaces required.
That's, that's in terms of limiting, not adding to. That's not saying they need, you need 198 more.
Fire, see that, all right. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to hear from other council members, and maybe you can expand a little bit, Michael, about your overlay. We haven't really discussed that.
Well, we've discussed it in the past. It's been brought up before, not only with parking, but we've discussed it with our rental program.
Right.
Where we wanted to go through and create an overlay zone with, well, you know, when we tried to control some of the rental properties, and, you know, and it just kind of, it was, we had a big blowback from it, because it's like, now you're alienating certain spots where people felt like their property values were going to go down, whether it was long-term, whether it was, you know, year-round residents, and now we're going to get stuck into this commercial, quasi-commercial district. And the residents outside of it are going to be scot-free. So it's, we had a big problem with it with going through the rental program, and we've talked about it with this parking management plan.
But what we're talking about now is, I think, a little bit different. I'm really just testing, because we're talking about no parking, not just parking only for beach access, let's say, I'll pick on Palm, on Palm Boulevard. We're saying pay on Palm, everywhere else is no parking. Part of the concern before was, if you have pay on Palm, you're going to force people to move inland to Cameron, and Hartnett, and elsewhere on the avenues to park for free. But if we say no parking other than by permit, which is a resident or property on the interior, that's a little bit different.
It is a little bit different, and the fact that, if you were to do it, and you say there is no parking, I mean, if you can park on Palm, no parking anywhere else, it was fine, but that includes the homeowners, their guests, and everything. Unless you can make exceptions for the homeowners and any other guests that they want to have there, that want to park in those rightways, then that's one of their biggest problems. You can drive down Hartnett, Cameron, Carolina, Charleston, and still see a number of cars parked in the rightway, because that's the only place where they really truly have to park. Like I said, unless you can go through and.
You mean the owners?
Owners.
Owners and their guests.
Both, in some cases, yeah.
So, really, that's the only way it would be, and I don't know how you get that through the state.
But we're talking about beach parking, right? Not just.
It doesn't, it's all in one.
It's a car, it's a car.
It's a car.
I'll admit, I don't really understand the overlay, and I don't want to take everyone's time. I don't get together with Michael.
Well, no, 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 no. Talk about it now.
Isn't, isn't, I would be for that, but the state won't let, S C D O T would just jump all over that.
Well, we have to, we have not.
I mean, that's, and it's so limited.
And where we are right now, we've not tested that with them, but, you know, every inch we move, we get, you know, higher risk that we're going to fail.
Under state law, we have the right to regulate parking in the municipality. That's been established already, we can do that. Now, they have certain, they're going to push back, but, you know, you remember the work.
Okay, but you've got to give them the other chapter, fairly for all residents of the state of South Carolina.
Right.
Well.
For all residents of the state of South Carolina.
All residents in Charleston, do we get the same privileges in these neighborhoods in Charleston? Absolutely not. I think we have the right to, you know, identify neighborhoods, and these neighborhoods can be, this is the parking district for the bar.
However, in those neighborhoods, what is Sterling's here? You shake your head if I'm going astray here, but the residents there have a reason, and they're the only ones who can park there. A resident of the city of Charleston who lives two blocks away can't park in that district. So somebody on Waterway Boulevard can't suddenly come to the beach and park on Palm Boulevard. Under the, under the structure that both Columbia and city of Charleston.
That's how I understand it.
It's made for them to park in front of their dwelling.
Right.
Or within a certain footprint.
Right, right.
And the district's a little bigger than that.
It's a, yeah, it's a neighborhood, basically. But it's still, you know, relatively tight.
We have to get related to our residents. I mean, this thing is.
Well, that's clear.
Growing and growing, and this is what I'm proposing with the parking, by ordinance, so we would just basically park that in there. And Ryan, this is different than the rental house, because part of the rental houses, there was no continual section of property. I mean, you had rental houses dotted all over the island, and that's why that wouldn't have been able to fly. But this is a continuous piece of property that we're talking about as far as this section, just like the business districts, I'm seeing a similar philosophy. But basically, the overall, the parking, we would have to designate the number of parking spots, but the residents would be able to park freely anywhere on the island they want to park, okay? As long as you register those vehicles in the system, all right? Guest would be, again, we would need a different, we'd need several ways to be able to sign guests up, to be able to come in and park in front of the neighborhoods for that, but it has to be tied to that particular property. It cannot, so you can't have, you can't have guests at your house all the way at the end of Ocean Bou, I mean, Waterway Boulevard, and go to the beach if they're just coming out to visit you, and they're going to have to get a parking pass, or they're going to use your car, they're going to drive to the beach. So, eliminate it like that. I think the key of any system is to keep it simple, and I think this keeps it simple. It addresses the needs of the residents, so they're not going to be charged extra for any kind of parking pass, they have total freedom that they have right now. It gets the parking problem out of the neighborhoods, and it also is much more enforceable for our police, because they'll be able to identify, rather than have a hard-fought thing to do, but identify where the, you know, identify the area, and police it and moderate it much better. And then if cars are outside of the district, then we take appropriate enforcement.
But so, it all has to be monitored. It's not really going to be simpler, because if I don't have a pass, I'm just going to go park in front of Jimmy's house or whatever. So it's kind of the whole, the monitoring isn't going to be any easier.
Right.
Let's even make it simpler. Let's start with a parking system. Residents park free, no beach parking in the commercial districts, the rec center, the churches, and we set a number. If 1,050 is way too much, right, we're inundated, and it even gets worse on the Fourth of July, let's start with a number. And then, next year, start thinking about, see how it works, you know? There's going to be all sorts of pushback if we just make it Palm Boulevard, because you're taking, you're taking 1,050 cars and making it, what, 400? Right away, that's what you're doing. And then part of that is citizens parking too, so is that what we want to do?
So you're saying.
I'm saying, let's go forward.
Give this, give the property owners, which would include citizens, et cetera, if they're.
Cars that are registered.
If they're registered on the island, or if they're a property owner, they get at least two passes.
Well, they get, no, if you have a huge around-the-corner lot, and you've got five right-of-way, oh, no, you're talking about passes, I'm sorry. Two different things.
Passes, right, right, excuse me. So they, so they get a.
Registered cars, they get a pass.
They get a, so we register that, which is no easy task to get all that stuff put together, and we haven't figured out who's going to do all of that yet. So that should calm most of the citizens down, except when they have to have visitors over or whatever. And then we have to have another system for them to deal with that, whether it be.
Hang tick, hang thing? Then it's up to the homeowner. If he doesn't ever have, I would never get it. I, you know, I don't, I have enough, I can park six cars on my lot without, I don't have that many friends, I guess. But, you know, but if you have two or three right-of-way things, you get two or three passes, but it's your responsibility to keep track of them. It's, you know, the.
The truth is, we don't have to be, we don't have to be, we don't have to be cheap with the passes.
Because that doesn't take into account real-life situations like Little Susie's birthday party, when you're going to have 10 cars there, and you only have two right-of-way passes, what are you going to tell A P P? No, I think we need to have a mechanism where people can, you know, plan ahead, and either, again, by an app, by the internet, or going to the police department and getting hang tags to register those, you know, if you're going to have an event, you have an event. And one of the reasons why you don't want to have it this way is you don't want abuse. You don't want someone coming over from Mount Pleasant every day parking in the neighborhood where they shouldn't be, because their friend happens to live there, and they give them the pass, so.
But as long as they park on their right-of-way. So you have two different passes. You have his right-of-way passes, and you have his aunt Tillie's birthday party passes.
Right, guest pass.
Guest pass.
But this is putting the onus on the residents.
Well, a little bit is going to have that, yes. It's not, it's not a magic bullet. There's going to be some onus on the residents one way or another, it's just not going to be caused.
But the residents are asking for us to do something about this. We need a solution, and we're doing this in response to the residents.
I just don't want them to be penalized financially for it.
No, there's no financial impact at all.
I think it's general agreement, that we're not going to charge.
Again, it would be, it would be one more step if you're planning Little Susie's birthday party, you're going to need 10 passes, you get the 10 passes, and you're, whether they're 10 hang tags. They could be little, they could be little license plate stickers you put on the back of your license plate.
Where are you going to get the sticker? I mean, you know, it's a detail that's a killer.
Devils in the details always.
I'm looking at the police force back here, their eyes are rolling, saying, we don't have enough people to do any of this.
Yeah, realistically, looking at our time, and, you know, I've been told, I've not seen it, but they say that we have this license plate recognition, recognition program.
We don't have it, but it can be acquired.
And that it's worked there. Is there a place where we can get some information on it and study that, or have you done that, chief?
Internet.
I've not looked.
Oh, Standtec, I interviewed him or something.
Yeah, we met with vendors that do that type of work.
So that's not going to be an issue.
No.
You know, I think we have to refine what we want, so we can go to them and say, is your system capable of doing this? But I think first, we have to decide what components the city wants in it, and then we can reach out to them to find out if it's doable. But there's so much flexibility available out there in technology these days. I'm optimistic that they could design something specifically for us, and at least one of the vendors indicated that that's their specialty, is designing something specific for individual cars.
This can be done, if we could put a rocket ship on the mill with Ryan's gun, we can do this.
Well, I mean, if in fact we could, you know, all of these issues about hang tags and Little Mary's birthday party or whatever, it would seem that we wouldn't have to, it could be pretty seamless electronically, but I could, it would take some trouble for me to ask my guests for their license plate, but if it could be entered into the system, and whoever's regulating the parking, that would come up as a legitimate license.
For that day, it's going to be a program that kicks it out the next day.
This other seems pretty cumbersome. I would think if in fact the software can do these kinds of things, you have the exception.
The challenge, Patrick, is you have, not everyone is at the same level of technical skills.
Right.
You have some people that are very savvy, and you have some people that may be retired, they may not even, you know.
Yeah, watch your computer.
Because we've got, we have to have a mechanism to handle, and I do think a majority of it, a vast majority is going to be using an app or using a loading information into a software package, but we do have to have a manual system to cover the bases.
So what we're saying is that we'll go forward with the pass, but there will be no residential parking.
What?
No parking in residential areas?
No.
So you can park anywhere.
The only way you could park on the beach.
Anywhere that's legal.
Beach overlay district.
I mean, we're talking two different.
We've got two different things on that.
He's still in the overlay, and you're in the island-wide.
Access parking, where is no beach access parking?
Right, I, what am I thinking? The commercial areas, the rec center, the churches.
But the beach access parking can be in residential areas.
Well, I mean, when we first got this plan, when we were thinking about it, anywhere that's legal now to park would continue to be legal. What we would be doing is limiting the number. So if 1,000 is a number that's just untenable and painful for the residents, we knock it down to the maximum, could be 600.
So our folks on Carolina.
That doesn't solve the problem.
But it starts to. Well, I love your idea. I don't think S C D O T, in any way, shape, or form, is going to go for it.
And I think we need to be able to go and unite as a council and say, this is what we want, and I think we have.
Good luck.
I'm sorry, folks.
I agree, I agree.
Someone's always saying that's not going to work.
Yeah.
But you have to have something for the residents, that's, I mean, and this is something that's important. And, you know, we can say no, but I really think that we, this is a unique moment right now for the island, that we can get a handle on this now, and we need to put together a plan that's comprehensive. I think we've got a good foundation, what we've been talking about today and other things we've worked on, and I think this is a very doable thing. But, you know, we can, you know, number one, it needs to be simple, and it needs to be, you know, fair. And the fairness, I think, is the number of spaces available, but this is something that I definitely think is doable.
Just a devil's advocate here, the people on Palm are not going to be thrilled with it, because what you're saying is now, there's no chance of decreasing the numbers, because they are going to be chock-a-block full all the time, because we've just decreased the numbers everywhere else.
They're full now.
Huh? Well, but it's not full now. It's very seldom full all the way to 40th, 39th. Now, if Palm is the only parking in the ocean side of Ocean, is what you're saying, they're going to, they're going to really suffer.
If I can add to that, Palm Boulevard, Highway 703, is the biggest road on Isle of Palms, has the biggest right-of-way on Isle of Palms. It's where my parents' house was, is in my family's name still, and it is what it is. I mean, they bought up there knowing that years ago, and, as much as I hate to say it, that's the way it is on Palm.
I agree with you 100%.
Well, Jimmy has a point.
We have, we're getting to a consensus, we've got to move ahead. We've still got like nine different viewpoints, just like on this island, you probably have 3,000 different plans, but we've all said from the beginning, it's going to be difficult, and not everybody's going to be happy. So I suggest that everybody hit some bullet points, submit it to the mayor, and in our next meeting, let's whittle the thing down and find out what I can agree with, with you, and what you can come to the table with me on, and what you can't. And that goes for everybody. And try to come up with a composite plan that we can get a consensus, or at least a majority.
I guess I have a point of order. Like, Michael, I told you, I would be glad to work with you. What's the limit, just three people could work?
Let me clarify that. You're asking about violations of FOIA. No two members of any one committee could assemble or begin to work on a subject matter without there being a notice of a meeting.
Subject matter of that committee, or just?
If it's just getting together. And no quorum of council, which would be five members, could get together without notice of the meeting, and, but, you know, the idea that Jimmy just mentioned of everyone sending individually their ideas to the mayor, to try to, you know, see where there's, like, we could then take those and say, there's definite consensus from everybody on this, which.
I have a, I have an alternative, bridging the gap. We do have standing committees. We can ask each committee to take on a specific element, and anybody who's not on that committee can provide them that, any independent input. And then that committee doesn't necessarily have to agree, they can come, they come back to us and talk to us about, you know, numbers, you know, what's, because you've mentioned You know, what's, I mean, because you've mentioned numbers, there's always, are we talking about the season number? Are we talking about the daily number? There's all sorts of different, what's the cost of this gonna be? That's a different issue.
She's a good point.
How do you, how do you implement it?
And it does, it affects all committees. It affects all regions, it affects all departments of the city, whether it's recreation, whether it's public work, whether it's for public safety, whether, I mean, real property. It, it kinda, it does, it overlays each one of those.
And everybody's got a committee meeting coming up.
What scares me on that is, number one, I'm.
Linda gets nervous when I do stuff like this.
Well, I only am nervous because we already have an agenda for one committee. It doesn't include it. We don't have time to change it.
And also on that same point is, by putting it out to committees and every one of the committees, we're pushing it out further. We're our meeting, this special meeting like this, I think is extremely important. I'm glad we're doing it, and we're all meeting together. We can all converse back and forth together. And I think we need to do this as much as it takes until we get this ironed out over the next thirty to forty-five days.
Can I ask, who is for an overlay?
I like that.
Well, I'd like to.
Well, I, I, I think.
I like, I like the thought. I, I don't know that we're gonna be successful.
I thought we'd be doing this tonight, though, is what, what Jimmy said, that we're gonna be identifying things and talk things through, and we have a, a board up there to start putting ideas out there. I mean, folks, the season starts in less than two months and, uh, I mean, and the new year starts in less than two months, and we're gonna get this done. I mean, I really thought tonight was a working meeting. We were gonna start ironing out these things.
I've learned a lot.
I've learned a lot.
Yeah, I've learned a good.
You know, are we, you know, are we gonna park on Ocean? And if we are gonna, you know, that's a, that's a straight up and down vote. Where are we? Are we, if we wanna, wanna move in that direction, we should talk about it and make a decision and move on to the next point.
Okay, what's your exact proposal?
Huh?
What's your exact proposal?
Use the whiteboard and start writing things down.
No, no, no.
We're here now. We, we, I hope everyone balked off the evening for, this is an important thing. So, you know, what, you know.
I'm serious. I mean, you wanna have, what is your proposal for parking on Ocean specifically? What could we vote on? What could we, right now, all in favor, say yes or no? Can we work?
Oh, you want that one?
I need more, I need, we need more legality about that.
Let me just remind everybody that you've touched this issue of Ocean before, and there was not a majority consensus in favor of parking on Ocean. I know Michael feels strongly that there should be parking on Ocean, but at the time that it was discussed before, which really was not that long ago, um, when, recall that when Standec met individually with each one of you all and, and created the matrix, and parking on Ocean was one of the subject matters, and there was not a majority of council in favor of, and that's why Standec did not touch it. Because there did not seem to be a majority in favor at that time. Now, you certainly can vote again if, if you all would like. But I will tell you, that's the reason why they did not bring it forward as any portion of their plan, because there didn't seem to be a majority consensus. And they didn't want the whole plan to get stalled because parking on Ocean had been presented as an alternative. And then just one other thing for me to add, I think there has been, you know, excellent discussion here tonight, and that is, just a reminder, I know I sent all of you a copy of the ordinance for the city of Charleston. We need to try to take all of these ideas and formulate them into as much of that structure as we can. And I do think that that's possible to do, but I think just, you know, I would urge you to go back and read their structure, because in addition to a beach access parking overlay district, to, to model after that ordinance, we would also want to create residential parking districts as well. So because, because following that ordinance that has already been tested and approved by SCDOT gives us, gives us the greatest edge for being successful with this. So, like, taking all of these ideas and kind of forcing them into that model is, is, I think, the best way.
Just to piggyback on what you're saying, too, is if you look at the Charleston ordinance, and, um, if you also look at the city of Columbia's, it's pretty much the same. But they address guest parking and construction workers coming to your home, and they, I think the city of Charleston, I think it's Charleston or it's Columbia, but they give out a booklet of thirty passes. So there are options that are already kind of written in there that you might like. So, I mean, just kind of keep that in mind, too, as you're thinking about the guest parking and the store parking.
But I, and I think the biggest part of it is not just, I mean, and it's, it's the ocean side of the island. I mean, and that's the biggest part where we're looking at. I mean, we're not worried about guest parking back on certain parts of Forest Trail or Forest Trail Court Two or Inseam Court or whatever. You know, I don't, that's creating more of a burden. I mean, whether we take the, 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 the beach overlay parking and apply it for a certain amount of time and the residential overlay parking, because the residents, whether it's, I have friends over, they need to park in my front yard, or, or they need to park in the, the, the parking spots across from the street, or Michael has friends over and they need to park, I mean, that's not, that's, that's not what's impacting the island. That's not what's causing the problems. It's, it's, it's the beach parking that's being occurring. It's on Carolina, on Charleston, on Hartnett, parts of Hartnett, on Cameron, on just on the, on the numbered streets, only about a block in. And that's what we need to, and that's what the biggest things we need to solve is, you know, those, those, I mean, the residents that live in that area still need to be able to have the opportunity to park the way they wanna park.
Where they park now.
Where they park now.
Right.
And visitors to the island, no matter how we, we register them, need to be, you know, directed to where they need to park. But it can, I mean, the, right now, the residents cannot be impacted in any way. And I mean, just even, like, if I have friends over, you have friends over, I don't wanna be calling up and registering, you know, some, I mean, 'cause somebody stops by, is like, ah, crap, I'm glad you came by. Let me get on the computer and download a form for answering, put in your, it's like, it's, it's, it's inconvenient, it's inconvenienced the residents. And it has no impact on what's going on in the rest of the island.
First, in the majority of time, if someone comes over to my house, there's room to park.
Correct.
And there is at your house, too. So that, this typing, that really is extraordinary.
Well, let's get back to the subject of Ocean.
Yeah, I'd like to, you know, when I'm asked by people, why is there no parking on Ocean? I don't have an answer. Um, and, 'cause it, it doesn't appear to be equitable. Um, and my, my thinking is the orientation for people that live on Ocean, on the ocean side, their orientation, that's why they call it oceanfront or lakefront. Their orientation is the front. Their parking's in the back. Um, you know, they walk through their backyard to get to the front. And I have no answer. I agree with Michael. I think there's.
Well, let's settle it, right?
Right. Is there a motion?
Well, there's gotta be a specific, I mean, not just a.
Right. Is, is there a motion to park on Ocean?
On the ocean side.
I mean, but the thing is, I mean, like we, like Patrick even said, he goes, I'm not even sure why there isn't. I mean, there's been a lot of different reasons, whether, whether it's come from the beach company or whether it's come from, you know, post hurricane Hugo and the parking, the sand a lot, and the way everything's.
It is what it is.
Right. And there's certain areas around Ocean Boulevard, I mean, all the way from the Coldestet back. I mean, you don't wanna encourage parking back in, you know, the first few streets for people to walk down to a beach where they can't swim, and, I mean, where it creates dangerous.
There's a second.
There's a couple, yeah, a second. So, it's.
I should, I should state this, just so the record is on the record. Um, SCDOT could come in and take up all of the no parking signs that exist on Ocean where it is an SCDOT road. They could do it any day if they chose to. And I don't think they would do it. And I think that if they were of a mind to do it, they would be contacting the city to get some input. But vote or not, if DOT decided to open it up, then, you know, they, they would be within their purview to do that. So just to.
All of it, no matter what we say.
Right.
Has it just been tradition? What I was told is when they were putting gas and sewer, that the constructing traffic made it unsafe. And so it became a temporary no parking, and then, then it just became a tradition.
That's a, that's a new one. I haven't heard that one. I haven't heard that one.
Why was it ever?
The one I heard is that the sand was so soft, people kept getting stuck.
That's the best, that's the most likely.
That's the same thing with the twenty-first.
And that did happen. Yeah.
All right, is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we include Ocean on the parking plan.
I'll second it.
Discussion, let's, let's, let's pare down the motion.
On both sides of motion?
Limited parking on the ocean side of Ocean.
Second.
All right, we have a motion. Anybody need to discuss it further? Everybody's familiar with the subject at hand.
Right. And, and I'll just go say the one thing. I think, two things, it's, it's a matter of fairness, and even if we do reduce the number of cars parked on the island, this would help spread it out throughout the entire island of beachment.
Okay.
And I'm not sure where, I mean, if we have the, I guess legally, we, we can just go ahead and change it.
No, we'd have to, we have to make a request. We have to make a request. They have to agree, safety issues, all, whatever else they look at, but.
I can see Marie not sure about, Michael, you made the motion and who made the second? You made the second. You refined the motion?
Well, I said.
Under discussion.
Parking on the ocean side of Ocean.
The motion is to park on, to allow parking or to include Ocean on the beach management, uh, parking plan on the ocean side.
And who seconded it? Patrick seconded it. Okay. Does that help, Marie?
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion?
Are we in discussion now?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, Ocean Boulevard, the lots tend to be narrower along there as opposed to other areas of Isle Palms. And also, so what we're doing is we're opening up more parking for non-residents on Isle Palms. That's what I hear.
Not really, because we're, also, we're limiting parking throughout the entire island, so it's in, the net is gonna be less parking than there is now on Isle Palms.
Tony's right. There's gonna be more parking on Ocean, obviously, because there's not that.
We'll be parking on Ocean where there isn't.
Parking will be less concentrated.
The total island parking will be, the spaces we are offering for people to park will be significantly less under what we've been talking about for the last two years.
But we don't, I mean, we still don't know how that's gonna work, or if it will work.
Right. And there's been no parking there for this many years. Why do we, why don't we flip parking now?
Well, ask the people on Carolina.
Well, there were, there was, there was parking there.
Now, we're talking about limiting parking there.
We're trying to eliminate parking. I don't wanna, I wanna eliminate parking all, all those areas.
Every, everywhere. It's covered, greased it anywhere.
No parking from beach to.
God, if I could, yes.
The tenth.
If I could.
All right, on the motion, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Raise, raise your hand. Since Marie needs to count it. Three.
Four.
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 Patty, Patrick, Sandy.
All right.
You gotcha.
Okay, all right.
So, motion's off the table.
Motion is gone. Washed away.
Let's find a way we can eliminate parking, I mean, throughout the island.
Right, now we're back to the plan, which would then put an overlay district, which is the discussion, on Palm and, if I listen to Ryan, somewhere down the avenues, one block or, or something like that. Does that include Cameron or would we?
I would say so, yeah. I mean, at least up to Cameron.
What about?
But like I said.
I'm sorry, I just gotta clear.
Beach access parking.
It would be, it'd be just as parking in Cameron.
What about?
Oh, no, 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 I'd say no. But this, like I said, this is something, I mean, as, as Mount Pleasant grows, as the tri-coniary area grows, right, right now, it may just be Cameron. You know, within a year, it may be Hartnett, you know?
Oh, sorry, where they're going. No, 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 right. We're talking about limiting where we draw a line.
Right. Right now, sure, it could be Cameron, you know, I mean, from Ocean back to Cameron.
Are we including the avenues in that, then?
The avenues to get there.
Can I make a suggestion about that? Only include those areas where parking spaces have been counted for the purposes of the beach management plan. And that would not.
Okay. That's a distant, that's a distance from the access.
It's not going to, you know, you take, that would take away some of your parallel streets.
Right.
And likely take away any of the parallel portions of the streets along Palm and would include some small areas of the parallel streets between approximately Third and, um, Tenth. But none on the, would, on the perpendicular streets, but none on the parallel streets. So, um, Charleston, Carolina would be no parking, but a few spaces have, were counted as part of the beach management plan on, yeah, on like Seventh, Eighth. And, you know, so the only thing that would be included in this proposed scenario would be those that exist and would be counted now, which now there are fewer, as we know, because there have been some improvements made along that area. Everything else becomes residential parking permit on, it just.
No. Residential parking permit.
Yeah, everyone's gonna register their, their car vehicle so they can park. If your car's not registered, you don't park.
Okay, just to clarify in my head, and then in this beach district, parking district, they still have to have a sticker. We're still gonna sell, or a, a pass. They have to pay.
Oh, yeah. Well, we're making the district.
No, I mean, in, in a perfect world, and, and with the way we wanna present it, no. I mean, the, the residents, no.
No, 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 no. She's talking about others.
Oh, visitors?
Beach, beach growers.
Oh, visitors? Well.
Yeah, they have to get a pass.
They'd have to get a pass. But if somebody's coming over to visit your house, and you live in that area, and you wanna park in your yard or park in, in front of your house, then they're fine.
Right.
And nothing changes.
I mean, and go back to Little Susie's birthday party. You know, most people have a yard where, I mean, I have three young teenage, young men, sons.
All teenagers.
And when they all come over, I mean, they're all over my yard. Now, not in right of way, my yard is covered of cars. Um, so, I mean, most of us do have yards that we can absorb Little Susie's birthday party.
Right.
All right, Little Susie's birthday party has to be between June and August, too. You have to remember. And if it's an evening dinner, all bets are off. You know, so, I mean, we get tied up in this, and it's gonna be an imposition. It's gonna be some bumps in the road.
Every once in a while, there would have, there was, there's gonna be some sort of odd special circumstance that has to be accommodated.
Right. And that's gonna have to be a decision by.
Yeah, the whole intent is not to be punitive.
No.
It's not to be receptive.
The intent is to protect the island from the future. I mean, just every time I drive through Mount Pleasant, go over near the new MUSC medical building on Rife for Range, all those apartments behind it. I mean, it's, it's, if we establish something now, at least we've established a cap. Then, and, and we've established something that someone's gonna goof up and come over and end up with a fifty dollar ticket, but they won't do it again.
And these were more than fifty dollars.
Well, that's what I think Solomons is. I think that's what.
You know, we definitely need to raise our, twenty-five dollars is.
That's a parking permit.
It's not enough to make people.
That's a case parking, yeah.
So if, if I'm a visitor in June and I want to go to the beach, so I get on my app and I register my, my license plate.
June seventh, whatever.
I can park.
Anywhere on Ocean Boulevard, or anywhere on Palm Boulevard.
That's all?
That's it. That's what you're.
I can't park on Carolina. I can't park on Charleston.
That's what you guys have just established.
Well, and you, you know, there would be some spaces on some of the numbered streets on that end that are currently counted as part of the beach management plan. If you use that.
Sir, what, Seventh and?
Yes, there are few, just a, you know, handful of spaces.
What about the, what about Forty-Second to Fifty-Seven?
And how are they gonna know that?
There are a few spaces counted along there, too.
So if we have.
I'm just saying everywhere that was.
Forty-Second would be part of the beach management.
Everywhere that's counted as part of the plan.
Forty-Second Avenue, those spots there would be part of the program.
So how about Palm after Wild Dunes, the whole upper part of Palm?
Well, I, I would, I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I, we would open up that, too. I mean, it depends on where you wanna define, you know.
What do you mean, open up?
We're expanding this now because by opening the, uh, the avenues, it really doesn't give the relief to the residents I was hoping for.
Well, we're not opening up the avenues. We're opening up some limited spots that are there now.
Okay, Ryan, help me out.
What's that?
If I, could I park at, you know, number five, uh, Thirtieth?
No.
Okay, so that would be shut down.
That's what I would, yep.
Okay, so it would be, the avenue is down the south end of the island.
Yep.
You know, the handful we have right now for the beach management program, it would be Palm Boulevard, it'd be Forty-Second Avenue.
Some spots limited, yeah.
Well, we have that big parking area.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's actually Forty-Seventh, according to the beach management plan, it's Forty-Seventh down to about Fifty-Six, and it's just a handful of spaces counted as part of the plan now.
From Fifty-Third to Fifty-Six.
Right, I would include the ones that would keep us legitimate for that, and then, other than that, no parking.
You said it on Palm.
How do you determine?
That's where they're counted on Palm.
How about on the other side, on the ocean side, on, there's no parking on Ocean, but on that side of the island for those beach accesses?
Well, that's where there's, on numbered streets, there's parking.
There is numbered streets.
There are a few of them, yep.
Where there is accounted for. There is a little bit. Okay, okay, just to make sure it's on both sides.
Question. The numbered streets above Forty-Second, no, no parking. No parking. How about for golf?
No, no, that.
Overlay.
The, the numbered streets from Forty-First, if you, if you, if you use the beach management plan and what was counted in it for parking, there are parking spaces identified on between Forty-First and Fifty-Six, I believe, may have been Fifty-Seven. Some of which are identified on Palm, some of which are identified on the streets. If you use that as your toggle, then those would remain part of the beach overlay district and, you know.
I would change the toggle then. I would have it on, just on Palm and that's it, not on Forty, on the avenues there.
From, from, for some reason, I'm a white hat in my mind, but Isle Palms proper ends at Fifty-Third Avenue. Wild Dunes outside the gate starts on the other side of Fifty-Third Avenue to Fifty-Seven.
No.
No.
I'm not.
Not for parking.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Not for, only for zoning matters.
Right.
I'm looking at Douglas here.
Only it allows them to buy a tennis membership or something, right?
So they're out of the SR One zoning district for, but for every other purpose there, yeah, outside of Wild Dunes.
So we're gonna say that parking is allowed on the side streets?
We say it now.
Right.
Well, we say parking's everywhere now.
But I think that's one of the things we have to look at, because I think still, that is a public safety.
Yeah, those streets is special.
Because if, if you have cars parked, obviously, you can't get four foot off this, this street. Cars are parked right on the edge of the street. We have emergency personnel trying to get in there. They're gonna pull straight in. You can get one fire truck in there. You can't get two of them next to each other. It's, it's a pub, you, you have to be a fifteen-point turn just to get that thing backed up. Majority of the time, they have to back all the way up to Palm Boulevard to back, back out.
Do that with the garbage trucks.
That's what they do, they do the same thing with the garbage trucks.
Okay, so let's take it Palm, and it's gotta be the inland side of Palm, doesn't it?
You can't park, you can't park on the. You can't park, you can't park on the ocean side.
So, the inland side of Palm, and not on those streets.
Right.
You can walk up that way, yeah.
I mean, there'll be golf cart parking on-
There's plenty of parking there. There'd be, I mean, yeah, you can make golf cart parking available, but-
Golf carts for all residents.
Golf carts can go anywhere.
Yeah.
Where there are-
They're not regis, they're not registered.
They can do anything they want to do.
Free range.
Free range.
Free range golf carts, like my kids.
But the golf carts cannot park on the beach access.
Correct.
Well, on 21st, 23rd, and 25th, they can't.
Yeah. It's wide enough.
It's wide enough, and there's far enough away from the sense of vegetation.
We've been advocating more, and more spaces for that forever, and, you know, but-
Well, I think down at that end, in the 50s, there's a natural spot for golf carts.
Right, all the way down.
All you do is clean out some of the overgrown shrubbery and, uh-
Well, and even now, even if you allow some of the car parking in an area, you'll have plenty of room for smaller golf carts up in that area.
Well, we have to have this discussion with DOT, because we've, we've brought that up with them before, and they said, we don't, you know, if, if it's, if it's our right of way, we don't distinguish between a car and a golf cart.
If you go to Mount Pleasant in the old village, and you look at where those streets end on Charleston Harbor, they got picnic, not picnic tables, but benches, where you look out over the harbor. I mean, I think it's beautiful the way they've done it, not really parking, except for residents to go down there and kind of enjoy looking out at the harbor. And that's what we need to do, is protect our residents, whether it's golf carts, not cars, on all those side streets.
It's fairy street. That's Murphy residence. That's a problem.
I think we're all in, we're all in a unanimous opinion, golf carts can go anywhere, as long as they're four, four wheels off the road, right?
Okay, so our, so our initial position is we have this beach overlay.
Don't look at them.
Don't look at them. We're going to make it happen.
Position we're at is we have this beach overlay, we're going to charge for parking in that area to off-islanders. Residents can park anywhere. That's where we're at, okay. Fallback position, if SCDOT just goes, no way, we're not going to allow that, then we're back to our original plan, we'll sell a limited amount of passes, you know, to limit the parking. If a thousand is too much, make sure only 500 can be on the island every given time. I mean, that's a huge improvement, over 1,000, or 1,200, or 1,500. I mean, I'm just, I'm just afraid we're just going to kick this can down the road.
Well, I say we take what we have, which is basically what everybody wants, is what the residents wants, is what we want. I don't know if DOT will bite on it or not, but hey, throw them a bone and say, hey, this, this is what we need.
And we still meet the beach front management plan.
We still meet the beach front man.
Well, when you said no parking on the numbered streets from 42nd to-
We may have toggled.
You make it squirrel, because you've still got accesses down there.
How about Palm Boulevard then?
Well, I think Palm's too far away.
You park it on Palm.
But there may not be enough spaces.
There may not be enough either.
Or it may be too far away. That's, has to be looked at.
I think there's an issue about how far away it is.
It's only 70 cars per eighth of a mile.
Right. I, I'm just, I'm just not sure, without looking at it, whether or not that would squirrel being able to count that as public access. And maybe we, we don't care. All it does is take that section of the beach out of having it public access. We still have quite a bit of public access. But I, I don't know if parking on Palm, where it's counted on Palm now in the beach management plan, is in the vicinity of 56th and 57th. The beach is actually a little bit closer there from that section of Palm to the access to get to the beach. When you get up, but let's just say like 46th and 47th, not 47th, 46th and 49th. And those, I don't know if allowing just parking on the non-ocean side of Palm would, would be able to be counted as maintaining full and good access.
That's kind of wiped out anyway, because of the Citadel and private property.
Well, that's my-
There's two streets. She jumped those two.
What is the distance from the parking?
I'd have to look at it.
500 feet from the end of the path, and those avenues between 53rd and 56th.
Are 500.
Beyond.
Well, they actually have a, they actually have a path that goes all the way up to Palm, so that's why you-
You can count them on Palm.
That's why they're counted from 500 feet from that point. So, you would not need it.
Okay, those are where the independent beach access paths are, not the road.
Is there a current formula right now? I mean, I've seen it where some people park too far apart on the perpendicular parking on Palm to allow, in, in some yards, you can see five cars. And perpendicular, but in others, you'll, depending if-
Depends on how many garbage carts you have.
Yeah. Is, how, do we have a formula?
Where's the question? What are, you talking about, how many cars? They can park on their-
We have, we have an idea of how many cars you can get per so many feet, but that's about it. Whether, you know, I park my, my truck, or somebody's Prius, you know, yeah.
And they're not marked.
No, they're not marked.
Well, but we have to use some kind of formula for counting.
Yeah, well, they did use a formula for counting, in terms of distance.
Because I don't remember, I asked the question, and now I don't remember the answer I got. How many cars were parked on Palm during that weekend? Do you remember?
I didn't commit the number to-
It was really over the top high. 500.
It seems like 500, 600.
I don't remember.
And what, you mean?
I think we're going in the right direction here. I think we, we've got to try.
Well, one of the things that I like about some immediate meetings, rather than going a whole nother month, is because remember that we have to have time to A, get approvals, and B, the staff has to have time to be able to get this implemented. And so, if we're shooting for this upcoming season, then the more we can get finalized, so that we can get the appropriate ordinances passed, and get the appropriate permissions, then we can, you know, try to get it implemented, because we'll be rushed to get it implemented.
Can we start pushing the SCDOT?
Can we ask maybe Douglas can maybe put together a schematic of what a beach, a parking overlay would look like, where the cars would be?
Based on this, under discussion?
Yeah, pretty simple.
We'll just kind of present it in our next meeting, and-
Which is D11.
Right, yes. That's what's currently on the calendar.
Yes.
Well, that's okay, except I can't be here. I might, I have to go to my wife's sister's. Well, it's-
Well, you want to stay another day instead of that day?
Can you go to 12?
Well, I'm not back till, late on-
When do you leave?
Late on Thursday. We've got to go to, drive to Florida, so.
But when, when do you leave?
Sunday.
Can we, can we bring him in on a skate?
Oh, I could do it by phone.
Did you get one all week?
Well, maybe I can't. No, I couldn't do it by phone.
You couldn't, but?
No, I couldn't do it by phone. I'll, I'll be gone, I'll be back Friday. I'll be back late on Thursday.
Give me some dates.
The 13th?
Oh, I don't have a date in front of me.
The Thursday's the 13th.
13th.
Let's do it on Friday. We'll have happy hour.
Exchange club, we have to be there.
There is nothing on the schedule for Friday, the 14th.
I've got Habitat for Humanity.
Well, what time?
6 o'clock.
Want to do it before then? I mean, looking at the guys that work and make a living.
Earlier, better. I've got an opening on the 13th.
Ooh. Want to do, want to meet at 4?
Friday, I'm done by 2 anyhow.
2?
3.
2 or 3?
2 o'clock, I'd do that. Whatever's good. I just, you know.
Well, you, you finish at 2, you want to be at here at 2?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock on the 14th?
Yep.
So, we're moving it from the 11th to the 14th.
Very good.
It's a happy hour.
What time again?
I'll bring you some money.
3 a.m. Is it Friday?
Mike's, we're precious. 3 a.m.
3 a.m. Everyone be here.
You know, get this thing done.
3 o'clock on the 14th.
And we can't swing the one on the 11th. Cancel on the one.
Right.
Done.
Done.
Monday 11th is shot.
Bingo.
Just sort of to cap, recap, we're protecting the citizens.
Yep.
We're protecting the commercial areas.
Yep.
We want to have an overlay system that's going to make SCDOT excited.
We'll see, yep.
But we're fulfilling the beach management plan, still, by over numbers.
And that's going to get, that's going to get confirmed.
Right, all of this has to be.
So, that's pretty much it.
Now, will we be able to vote on an overlay district next week, next meeting?
Do what?
Will we be in-
We don't have, we have to get to DOT before we do anything.
Don't you think we should have to vote it on before we give it to the force?
Oh, we'll have that. You mean the overlay, the graph? Oh, yeah, 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 we'll vote it out.
Is there any way we could have some-
Whether we can go real forward, wait to DOT. Go ahead.
Could we have somebody from DOT come here?
They won't give you answers, doesn't it?
They're not going to do that.
Yeah, they have a poker face. They don't say anything. That's right.
They will say, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah. When you get a plan. So, we need to have a very, very-
They're not even elected to say that.
How about, how about a higher level elected official that may live on Isle Palms?
Well, we, we've already talked to them, but we have to have, we'll, we'll do this thing for next Friday. Then we'll set a date. We'll have plenty of time to do that.
So, I have a question there. Is it possible that there can be some communication with those elected officials with what Michael's talking about?
I think we need to get through next Friday first, and then, then we can do it.
Okay.
I'd rather get that step done, instead of, instead of giving them cross signals here.
Is there interest in, in addition to the map that shows what would be proposed for parking, and what would be proposed as designated as residential parking only, is there interest in also coming up with a draft ordinance that would, that is just strictly in draft for you guys to look at, sort of the mechanics of how that would operate?
I think that's going to be possible, yes.
Well, it, and when we get into the details, we've got to start talking about numbers. We've got to start talking about dollars, in other words, what we charge for each one of these things.
And for fines, yeah.
What are our lots charged? Eight or 10?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven? Okay.
The county's, the county's eight, we're seven. I believe, I believe the county's going to nine.
Some of the private lots are 10 and 15.
Oh, sure.
Um, we've got to talk about implementation, I mean, and that is the app, and what, and if we're going to have, if we're going to have hanging, you know, how do we move all that out?
I think we need to know what we're, I mean, it's just all going to be speculative.
And then we've got to worry about enforcement, or-
You've got to worry about money.
Because, yeah, well, we keep talking about, we'll get the police to do it. Well, the police are doing police matters.
Their, their companies that do this, right?
Well, I don't think we're going to-
We either go, well, I'm not sure I want to put our reputation in the hands of some heavy, heavy-handed third-party cop.
Yeah, I want to see the beach tow- But we've talked about revenue neutral, if we charge, that would freeze the, the number of personnel for our police department.
We need to know how many, what it's going to take to do that. And then we've got to have a communications program, so.
I think that's critical.
It's going to cost.
But the thing is, if we're going through, I am sorry, Barbara.
Douglas is waving his hand over here, and I think we need to-
Was there, if I'm going to create a map, was there consensus that we'll just start with where the spaces are shown on the beach management plan? Did we talk about 43rd to, from 43rd to 53rd? I'm confused.
I think you need to identify the spaces on Palm from 42nd or to 57th on Palm. And do those, do those spaces-
So, they won't count? They're too far away to count for the beach, so it will-
They are too far away?